Into order of the Dexter City Council meeting Monday, October 11th. Please stand for the pleasure. Olivia, you can leave us. Please call the roll.
Aldag?
Here.
Griffin?
Here.
Hubbard? Michelle's?
Yes.
Schla?
Here.
Semifaro?
Here.
Kyo?
Here.
Shade?
Here.
Did I pronounce that right?
Sorry.
Shade? Sorry.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item C is approval of the meeting minutes. From our city council meeting on July twenty second. There's someone that wants to move the minutes.
I'll move the minutes.
Moved by Dan? By Joe, thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay. Please call a vote to move the minutes.
Uh, Semifaro?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. We have no prearranged participation under item D tonight. We're down to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone that would like to speak tonight that's in the audience? Under non-arranged? Okay, let's go to online. I see Scott, Kevin, Tim. Probably two consultants and Tim, right?
Yeah, I would imagine.
Is there anyone online that would like to speak tonight under non-arranged? If so, please use the raise hand feature. Okay, we will keep going. Is there any conflict of interest to declare? Yes, Steve? Okay, that public hearings, that public hearings coming right up. Well, let's just be kind of that, okay? Perfect. Thank you for letting us know. Any conflicts of interest? Okay, none declared. Down to item G, which is approval of the agenda. Someone like to move the agenda for tonight's meeting?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Awesome. Second by Dan. Zach?
Couple of items in here were submitted, uh, state tagged on there after the the date they're supposed to be submitted in, one on Tuesday, one's on Wednesday. Rule two point one requires full consent to consider it. Uh, I do not offer my consent, but you guys are free to do what you do.
Which items are late?
Uh, H and M one. And one, I believe, wasn't submitted until Wednesday.
When you say Wednesday, the packet came out one on Thursday? So what is? I'm not following him.
Rule two point one says things that are submitted after the deadline. Which is Monday. Requires consent of all members present.
But H one would be a staff thing, right?
I mean, that in that case, K one, I mean, I I I didn't print my report until Wednesday.
I said, we haven't followed this before. I'm just raising it.
Okay, so you're picking on the date that's on the memo, is what you're saying. That's not what that rule implies. The city manager doesn't have to have everything ready by Monday.
Yeah, the the rule says any other member or representative committees, boards, commissions desiring to place a matter on the agenda shall notify city office by five P M.
Any other comments under pool of the agenda? Hey, please call a vote to approve the agenda.
Uh, Schla?
Yes.
Michelle's?
No.
Semifaro?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, we are down to item H, which is the public hearing. Steve, that you had asked about. The public hearing tonight is uh, for there is a resolution approving the vacation of a portion of Alpine Street Public Right Of Way, block one of the original plan to the village of Dexter. Um, I'll open the public hearing. And then we'll let anybody who's here for the public hearing, want to speak. Or introduce themselves. Um, speak. We'll take all public comment. Close the public hearing. And then council has the option of considering the item. So I will officially open the public hearing at seven oh five. And I would like to ask, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at the public hearing related to the potential vacation of a portion of Alpine Street? Oh, I'm sorry. Is that better? I- is that better, sir? Is that better? Yeah, we could do that. Uh, Michelle, would you be wanting to do that? Perfect. Yep.
Okay, council is conducting this public hearing to consider a partial vacation of Alpine Street. It's a blentry, can you hear me?
And and Michelle, Josh, can you put the picture up on the screen? Please. That's on page twelve of the packet.
Uh, hang on just a second. Alpine Street is a ninety nine foot wide road right of way. The area proposed vaca- for vacation measures thirty three and a quarter feet by a hundred and eighty three point six oh feet by thirty eight point oh seven feet by one ninety eight point five four feet. The proposed vacation will reduce the Alpine Street right of way to sixty six feet wide. It's on the screen over here. Um, for that portion that's located between Main Street and Farmer's Market. It's not the entire Alpine Street. The process for vacating a right of way either in whole or part is prescribed in Public Act two eighty eight of nineteen sixty seven. It gives the city of Dexter the right, the authority to vacate any of its public road rights of way. As the owners of the property directly, or as the owner of the property directly adjacent to that vacated portion, in other words, this portion here. The city of Dexter will obtain the um, title to that portion being vacated. The recall for the vacation is the construction of the new fire station um, in order to meet yard requirements setbacks and things like that um, for the new fire station. I can answer any questions that council might have or that the public might have.
What is the setback that we have to meet on that side?
On that side is it is a fifteen foot setback. Um, Alpine, I'm sorry. The property at eighty one forty has two front yards. So there's a front yard on Main Street and there's a front yard on Alpine Street.
Thank you. Jamie, had your hand up?
Yeah, if it's okay to ask a question before the public hearing. So I'm just trying to understand like effectively what this means. So you see the farmer's market overhang? And how close that border comes there? That all is able to stay, the existing sidewalk that's there? That will stay?
Correct.
A sidewalk, new sidewalk will is the new sidewalk going within the red or within the green?
The new sidewalk is within both of them. Any portion of that sidewalk that ends up on the city's private property, excuse me, um, it's still public because it's currently owned by a public entity, the city. If at some point in the future, the city would decide to sell it for the way the charter is right now, um, they would create an easement if it was going to a public entity, uh, private entity, so.
Correct.
You're correct.
It overlaps a bit of the existing sidewalk.
Right.
And then one will continue.
Yes, sir. That's okay.
Okay, so while the public hearing is still open. Steve, do you have any comments to make um, for the record? Or can you introduce yourself? Well, can you introduce, since you've asked a question, can you introduce yourself and say your address? Makes sense. Sir, do you have any comments? Do you understand what we're talking about now?
No. Thinking about what's going on and I'm not sure that I know why it does not, but I what what the building of the uh, fire department has to do.
To 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 meet the, to meet the zoning requirements, we need a fifteen foot setback, just to meet. Correct, correct. I mean, the 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 property isn't really changing hands per se. It's going from the city of Dexter to the city of Dexter, but instead of it being right away, it will be part of the property description. This process, process more than anything. Sir, can we get at least a first name and your address for the record? That you showed up?
Jack Blanchard.
Uh, Jack Blanchard. Thirty one hundred. Wylie Road.
Thank you.
Born here in nineteen thirty three.
Welcome, sir.
I'm ninety one years old.
Oh, my goodness.
I love it.
In my last six days in the army. All I heard going off. Ninety billion.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Good to meet you.
Thank you for your service.
Are there any further comments? Under the public hearing? Okay, we'll close the public hearing at seven fourteen. Michelle, thank you for giving the explanation. Is there someone on council that would like to make a motion? Uh, regard regarding the resolution that's in the packet?
I'll make the motion that is on page nine, I believe. In consideration of the information provided by staff along with input received during the public hearing conducted by the city council on August twelve, twenty twenty four. City council moves to adopt a resolution approving the vacation of a portion of the Alpine Street Public Road right of way, block one of the original plan at the village of the Dex- of the village of Dexter.
Okay, motion by Sanam? I'll second. Second by Joe, thank you. Is there any discussion? Jamie?
Is it worth, Michelle, I don't know, touching on the aspects of the resolution that pertain to maintaining access to the various utilities that are there is. I do see in the resolution, there are a couple of XXXX seem to be placeholders. The existing right of way or the new right of?
The existing and what are left with.
Okay.
With Alpine, um. My dad told me the same thing would be with the issue about A and B, but we need to quote that 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 able to um, motivate patients. Their personal motivation, having that been able to um, review the. Um, I did follow up with uh, Andy from O H M is the one that did the surveys. He said that as long as the language is in there, they um, if you go at the reading description for the um for that vacation, it is subject to all these restrictions and records and so um the the two utilities are going to maintain any right of way or retain any pieces they have. If um, the vacation would change, it ends up not doing cities eighty one forty five, you're creating and ultimately.
So is right. So is there any like slippery situation because we don't have these pages specified in the two whereas statements? So it says it grants the easement as recorded in life or XXXX page XXXX of Washington County Records and.
We can either, I put that in there in place we need to. But um those two sections could take it out based on the fact that there is using the language.
In that description.
Um, and then staff the city manager to understand that if the easement were needed to be granted on a eighty forty, we're coming back to.
Yeah, the the language could simply say whereas the city of Dexter intends to grant E T Electric Company Underground Transmission Line easement. If necessary. They both could be phrased. That it's our intention to grant it if it's needed, if necessary. And then the recording could take place later. The 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 actual librarian page is not.
Right, I would probably, yeah, I would probably rather have it be worded more accurately.
Michelle, do you have any problem with with the intent? All right, that's what I would propose. Zach, you had your hand up?
I I am wait while she's still writing down. Uh, page sixty two of our master plan says the city has ninety nine foot wide right of ways in the original village area. This is part of the original village area. It doesn't have that added as parentheses. The city plans to retain the full right of way, the full ninety nine feet. Have there been any changes to that text of the master plan since it was adopted? Okay, in our form-based code for this area, we're required to have minimum sidewalk widths in front of the buildings. Ten to fifteen feet. In front of the fire station as planned, we don't have that as part of the plan.
They have to do at this point, um nothing has been submitted to me that any case in this room is, I did give you guys
So we know how that lines up with where the right of way is drawn? Is it gonna wiggle it or is it gonna be all street side?
If the if the width of the sidewalk needs to be wider regardless of whether it's as a result of vacation, um
All right, the the sidewalk on the other side next to River U Cafe is not ten feet wide by my recollections. But if the building were to burn down, we'd require to meet the code or modifications or variances. All right, um, so what I'm I'm getting at here is that by reducing this contrary to what our master plan says we're we're prohibiting future improvements that our zoning ordinance requires. We're making it impossible because of tightness restrictions from having the sidewalks and a center turn lane. If we determine one is needed, it's gonna make it very prohibitive to put bicycle lanes in. I also have the concern that if this were a private property owner, we would not allow them to vacate a portion of the public sidewalk. I've heard the description, that's the city sidewalk. Yes, but not forever. We should make decisions not looking at our feet, but looking at the horizon. At some point in time, there's gonna be a uh, lease signed with Dexter Area Fire Department where they're gonna get control of the property. It's gonna be their property. Without language in here or without changing the lines they could exclude folks from the boundaries of the property, and I think that's very sloppy. If it's something we wouldn't do for a private property owner, we ought to hold ourselves to that same standard. I don't believe there's any case made that the last paragraph on page ten whereas it's necessary for the health, safety and welfare. We heard that this is necessary because we can't fit the building on the property. We're gonna wave a magic wand, make the property bigger, and so it can fit. That's not health, safety and welfare. That is flexing the mighty power of government to do what it wants to do. That's it.
Jamie?
In the absence of this, um, so for example, were this a private property owner in a similar situation, would their only remedy be to go to Z B A? Would there be a remedy to go to Z B A? I mean, if this is simply about a setback not being met? And likely a private landowner couldn't ask for the road right of way to be vacated in their favor, would the private landowner's remedy be to go to Z B A? Would that be relevant?
Yes.
And we opted to not go that route because. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, Justin, please call the vote to approve the resolution or the motion.
Um, Michelle's?
I don't offer any vote.
Just keep going.
Uh, Semifaro?
Yes.
Hubbard? Oh, Aldag?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Schla?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Um, we're down to I, which is communications. We have our upcoming meeting list. A resignation letter from George Frost, our previous recording secretary. Uh, recognition letter honoring Tim Stewart for his good work. And the notice from Washington County. Are there any comments on any of the written communications that are in the packet? From either staff or council? Jamie?
Uh, does Josh have an update as to the rescheduled parks meeting? Because I don't believe it's gonna be on the third Tuesday of this month.
An update parks meeting should be on the Thursday, the twenty seventh.
Thursday, the twenty seventh or twenty ninth? If the twentieth is a Tuesday, then the twenty seventh would also be a Tuesday.
Twenty, the twenty ninth is the Thursday. Or would be the Thursday. Any other comments on the uh packets? Good work, Tim. Uh, the letter that was received was very nice to read. Keep up the good work, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to our first report, which is our public services superintendent.
Can I ask a question?
You can.
Sure.
Sure.
Um, on that vein, yes, it was nice to see that letter about Tim. I think a while back, uh, I had asked about what the decision-making process was for what communications to include in packets and what not to. Because I imagine that city staff receives and coun- council members receive any number of emails, so I don't know what the decision-making criteria is for what goes in the packet.
I just requested it be in the packet since it came to me and not anybody else here. I could have put it under my report just the same. But it just made sense that it's a general communication. It was right, and it was only to Tim and to me, so. Actually, I could have put it under my report just the same, Jamie.
Right.
But I asked Justin to put it there.
Right. I'm sure you receive lots of emails. How do you decide which ones you include in the packet? I'm sure you receive lots of emails. I mean, it's just a general question, not.
Yeah, I thought this was pretty important to recognize the work he's doing. Is that your only question?
Yes.
Okay. Tim, we're down to your report.
Okay, obviously, everybody sees the three-week report um, ahead of them. If uh, feel any questions that might need it this time?
Dan has a question.
Tim, in your report, uh in your, I believe it's your water report and your sewer report, we changed some radios out, uh, U I S did. And I was wondering how the comm fails were working or if it's been in long enough with the new radios to be able to tell whether it's gonna cut down on overtime.
Um, so since we put them in, we have not any problems. Uh, the comm failures, the comm fails have stopped. Uh, we have a completely different frequency they put us on. Um, and then given us the new radios, they basically swapped out the new radios at their cost. Um because these, the the, they weren't newer, they are the older, more robust ones, so to speak, so, but since we've done it, we haven't had any problems, not gonna, thank God.
Thank you.
Zach?
Uh, it it appears the R R F B in front of the school is still really long. Have, are we working on changing that or is that stuck where it is?
I I think O H M owes uh, owes a letter to um, Dan Dapridge.
All right. Um, have we had folks out to Baker to make sure that the striping is what it's supposed to be? The the white striped area seems smaller than the three and a half to four and a half feet that I recall it was supposed to be.
Um, I'll go out there tomorrow, Zach, because they were still working on it when I left this evening, so I did not get a chance to take a look. Um, but I can go out there tomorrow and take a look.
Uh, question from a resident, uh, many of our our uh, recreation streetlights are showing signs of rust on them. Do we have a regular maintenance schedule on those?
Uh, recreation, streetlights, I I guess.
Streetlights, sorry, it's it's a, it's an urban design thing. They're not they're not original cast iron lights. They're our our streetlights. The green ones.
Okay. Um, we can take a look at it. We're gonna uh, prevent a maintenance program, gonna get started. And hopefully this year, Dan Dapridge is gonna give us a uh, an update or, excuse me, a quote. And uh, that's something that we can also look at with that.
All right, and and lastly, I I'm very happy to see most of the sidewalk gaps that were created from D T E R filled. I will say I'm not entirely happy with the way they treated us by not putting up any warning signs or just putting a couple of cones out. If some, if a kid's riding on a bike and the cones knocked over they're gonna bite it. Um, so I I hope in the future, if we have other contractors in here who remove a whole bunch of flags all at once, that we make them put the saw horse with the one leg up or something that's more visible. That's all. Thanks.
Any other questions for Tim? Tim, there don't appear to be any more questions. The report is still yours.
Yeah, so like we were talking about a little while ago, um, I got a call, so the. Sounds like all the, um, lines were done, taken care of today and special lines also. Uh, I talked to Justin earlier about this. I was planning on if they couldn't get the street signs open or up by Wednesday, and it was going to be maybe later this week, if not next week, about opening. Uh, Baker, I did talk to H M this afternoon on the way home. And they have concerns because of the decorative street signs, uh, there's some work to it and there might be some. Uh, the work that's done in the road or from the road that have to sit in the road and divert traffic and, and she thought it would be easier if we didn't do that just for safety. Reasons and I'm okay with that. They're still under their contract and way before they'll be done before the twenty-third, um. And. There was one more and I'm forgetting which one it was. Everything went good with the Dexter Summer Festival, it sounds like, um. I tried to get as much as we could done. Couple of blurps here and there, but nothing major. So everything else seemed to be good and that's about it.
So now?
Yeah, I would actually like to make a comment on that. Not only I heard from residents, but also as soon as I got to work today. Um, I had, uh, some colleagues stopping by here and there to, to tell me that they attended the, the summer festival and how much they enjoyed it. Both, uh, colleagues that live in Dexter and, and not. Um, and, um, I had a chance to also share that with, uh, Becky Poplar, the president of Chamber of Commerce. And, um, received a note back that, um. How much they enjoyed planning and working on this and looking forward to next year. And, um, I want to quote this line that she, uh, shared with me that. Everyone in the city offices and the DPW are treasures fit this community. Uh, so thank you so much for all the work that, um, you have put on this, um, Tim, your team and. Justin and everybody as well as the, of course, the Chamber of Commerce for making it such a fantastic festival.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Next up is our community development manager, Michelle.
Good evening, council. How are you this evening?
Good.
Good.
Fine, thank you. You've got my report in front of you. Uh, I have no verbal update tonight, so please let me know if you have any questions.
Jamie?
Yes, regarding your DDA updates on page twenty-five of the packet. The first one relates to the proposed additional public meetings related to thirty forty-five Broad Street redevelopment area. I think I made this comment last time. It details, you know. Uh. That the attendees, the future attendees would receive details about the workshop held in twenty seventeen. And other details from twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, but it doesn't make any mention of the public engagement workshop that we just had in June. So I am just. Calling out again a second time that I think any public engagement session we've had on thirty forty-five Broad Street. And any subsequent report should be considered in any future public engagement.
It will be.
Okay, that's been missing, I think, from every time there's been a summary of what will be discussed.
I'm just identifying.
And then also in that report from the most recent public engagement session, I had asked for an appendix to be included. That detailed either the annotated agenda for that meeting. So in addition to just seeing the results in the summary of what the public said. That anybody looking at the results could also see what the public was asked to consider, including the various parameters and constraints that were placed on them.
Will be it when it's the, the. I believe I put this in my report before Carlisle Warman will put that. Together, um, when it's the complete final report, but if it's something we want, um, ahead of time. Happy to provide it.
Right. I just mean that if, if people are being presented with here is past. You know, public's being presented with past public engagement results, I think that should all be part of that. Um, and then as pertains to your second update about the DDA's, uh, recent purchase, um. Of. Eighty fifty-five Fourth Street. I'm curious, was that a verbal update at our meeting on July twenty-second? I don't believe it was.
Hmm, no.
No.
No, I didn't do anything on the twenty-second. I didn't have information to be able to provide at that.
Right. I was surprised to read this in our packet. I understand people have often made the claim, oh, when an opportunity arises, we need to seize it. It was surprising to me that the DDA felt that it had four hundred thousand dollars to. Purchase that property. Given other budgetary constraints in the city. It would have been nice as a council to comment on that, but we did not have an opportunity to. Thank you.
I think I put in my report.
No.
That I was. Working on that.
And seven twenty-two?
Might even been the one before.
I don't see it in the seven twenty-two packet.
Give me a second. I think when I met with the property owners the first time, I put in there. When did we meet, Michelle, you and I? Do you remember? End of June?
We met with them in June. The DDA. The, the DDA went into closed session in June.
Yeah, on, on, in my July, my first meeting in July report. I put on June twenty-seventh that on behalf of the DDA. Michelle and I met with John and Lynn Felkowski about potential purchase of property. And nobody asked me any questions.
Okay, we have long packets.
I, I'm not. It's not a big deal. You could ask anytime you see anything. I just. Didn't want to let it go.
What are the DDA's plans with that? I mean, we've had such great success in thirty forty-five Broad. What were they hoping to achieve?
Jamie, that board has to figure that out, I guess, but one concept could be, there's been a lot of. There's been a lot of public sentiment that maybe the area near. The park should be a continuation more of the park and less dense. The DDA's development plans still. Show adding people in the downtown. Maybe that new property gets combined with the gravel parking lot. And instead of the, the buildings that have been talked about. Instead of dealing with the soil contamination, all that stuff that's harder to do close to the park. Maybe that area gets transformed to park. And everything gets pushed a little further away. But I'm just one person, so I don't, I don't know what the DDA's plans are necessarily. There, there was, there was.
You're the liaison though, so I appreciate hearing your perspective.
It's like, well, there, there's, there's, there's interest. I mean, people are listening, Jamie. I mean, there, there's. You know, we're all, we, we, we may not have every. Packet summary or, you know, you asked about. The question about the public meetings, all the input is important. And. The most recent. Communication lines indicate that there are people that don't want as much density there as we've looked for. Okay, and there's, there's people on the DDA that have heard that infor- information. And we've, we've, we talked about it openly. At the last, the last meeting, and then we talked about in closed session. The opportunity was there over the last couple of months. I honestly didn't think we were going to get it. But, but, but we got it for less than asking. And assuming nothing changes between now and August thirtieth. Michelle has helped organize a building inspection. Uh. We've also authorized her, she's authorized a phase one. Using ASTI. So we're doing all the due diligence on the property that we would. You normally try to do to do it the right way. Again, there's a lot in front of us here, but it's an opportunity and the thought was that maybe, maybe that's where. The density should be rather than right on top of the park.
I appreciate those details. I will just add that if you go to the street view. Currently for that property, you see the bicentennial carnival set up. So that's. An interesting updated street view.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know.
It's a snapshot in time that is not going to happen again. So if you go to the street view, you will see the. Pizza and pretzels. And some of you might think that's always there. I don't know.
Like, what was your favorite ride over there?
I did not go on them.
Oh, okay. Okay, back to you, Michelle. Or Jamie, you, you were asking questions.
I'm fine, thank you.
Does anybody have, Zach?
The zoning map amendment and the consent agenda, did that go back through the process of public care of the planning commission?
No, it doesn't need to go back through the. At the best of my knowledge, it doesn't need to go back for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any, uh, updates on any of the board commissions that are listed there on J three? Or J four? Okay, we'll jump over to city manager report on page three of the agenda, Justin.
Sure, um, so we had a successful auction, um, we, as normal, we had higher than average. Uh, turnout compared to Washington County. Um, we had about three times as many people vote absentee as we did, uh, people vote in person. We've been, uh, continuing to work through, uh, the new hire process for, um, two of the positions, um. Two of the positions we, we, well, now as of today, we, uh, we've made three selections out of the, out of the four positions. Um, happy to, happy to announce that as of today, we, we, uh, now have a new administrative assistant who will be starting tomorrow. Um, we're excited to, to get her going. Um, she's coming to us with, uh. Ten plus years of experience, um, a lot with, uh, the village of Stackbridge. There's a, there's a few updates, um, in my report about, um, a request from the Washington County Road Commission. And, um, the Dexter Chelsea Roundabout Project, um, and our participation as a result of, um. Uh, our inclusion in that project for our, um, traffic signals and. Whether or not we do want to participate in that project. Um, we're going to keep working through, uh, those conversations with the county. Um, we had a preliminary meeting with OHM, um, to start the now annual process of updating, uh, the road asset man- management plan, the TAMP. Um, I expect that you'll see, um, some recommendations come out of that here. It'll probably take a month and a half, two months, um, to keep working through that. Um. Paint Dexter is coming up this weekend. Um, I'm always happy to, happy to see that. Um, as of today, we are expecting some, some rough weather, uh, this weekend, so, um. May have to make some adjustments, but we're gonna, we're gonna keep, keep fighting the good fight for Paint Dexter. Um. Tim gave some updates on, uh, some of the road projects. Um, we expect for here on Farms and Forest Street. That the milling, uh, of the existing asphalt, um, will likely start later this week. And then the replacement of the fresh asphalt will, uh, likely take place next week. Um, and we have flyers going out to residents, uh, tomorrow on that. We're still working through, um, the contract extension, uh, discussion with police management and expect, uh. To have a final draft of that for the next meeting for city council to, to consider. Um, does anybody have any questions for me?
Zach? Uh, in the consent. Uh, bills and payroll, there are four thousand dollars we're paying to Amtrak for the permit for the. Water main extension for Pelham. Are the Pelham folks paying us back for that?
Uh, it, it's actually coming out of their, um, their bond.
Okay, so. Okay, so escrow not bond, right?
I'm so sorry, I, I, escrow.
Thank you.
So now?
Sure. Um, can you tell us, uh, for who might be interested, what is the process for registering as a write-in since we only have two? Um, people with petition. On the ballot versus the three spots we have. I would have to look, um. I, I believe the filing deadline is closer to the election day. Um, there's going to be a form involved. Um, what the filing deadline is, I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to look. Can people? File from now, do you know until whatever that deadline is, or is, is it like a window that is closer to that, to the election? I, I, I believe that there's a deadline. Not necessarily a window. That's the, uh, uh, that's typically how election-related items work. Correct. Thank you.
Related. Stan could probably chime in on that topic. Um, related to the Dexter Chelsea Roundabout update. That's significant, yes. Unknown capital cost that could be in the mid-six-figure range.
Correct.
Half a million dollars.
Yep.
And so our plan is to continue to negotiate that that's not our responsibility?
That's, that, I think that's the first step on the train.
Well, I think, I think the question I would ask is. Um, you know, we have push buttons at most of the crossings. And there are. Ramps that at one time were put in. At some level of ADA compliance. You know, there's, there's fancier technology. There's. Buttons that when you push them, it'll say, don't walk. Don't walk. Don't walk. Don't walk. Well, no, that's, that's what it does. And it'll, it'll, I mean, you could, you could say it's advanced. The, the, the technology for crossing the street has advanced. I think that, you know. There could, there could be upgrades to, to those crosswalks. They, they, they don't have to be upgrades to the crosswalks. Um, I, I guess the question. Guess, you know, Zach mentioned like the, the, uh. Overhead lighting or the, the decorative. Uh, mast arm pulls, you know, have some rust on and they need painting. Everything needs to be upgraded or maintained. One of the two. You got to either maintain it until it can't be upgraded anymore or it gets upgraded. I think the real question that I have for the county. Here is. How necessary is it for them to do, to have the upgrades? And still have the signal timing that I was. Thinking was the biggest benefit of this project because they were supposed to be. Coordinated all the way, I think, from Zeb Road through the Dexter Pinkney one by. Um, Jenny's Farm Market. And I don't know if. Our technology just doesn't allow the. The timing to be the same and, or, or, or what level, there might be an in-between level of this is what I'm getting at. It might not be. I mean, you said mid-six-figure range. We don't, we don't really know what the options are here. I don't know. There's enough information to know that, do we?
Yeah, so, so, so I, I think we have an idea of what would need to be, what, what would need to be upgraded.
Okay.
Um, that they, they've done the, the onsite surveying of. Um, you know, that, that looks like it's out of compliance. That looks like it's out of compliance and, you know, we, we, we have that list. Um, but. There, there, there are a few questions. Number one is can the county go back to the, to their granting agency and ask? Can, 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 can you add this? You know, this, this is a new set of regulations that you are imposing on, on a project that was. Um, obligated or, you know, this request. Is, it was essentially approved and now you're coming back and saying, you know, there's. There are these additional obligations that you're going to have to do before this gets bid. Um, so I think that's, that's step one. Um, but. If we go and work on, on these roads. After the new law gets implemented. It's likely that, that we will have to make these upgrades anyway. If we do them all in one package. It, it's, it's expensive. Um, we could tackle them one at a time at, at our leisure as we choose to, to resurface those intersections. Um, we could choose to do them outside of a, a federal project. Um, and so it doesn't go through the, the state bid letting process, which, you know, could potentially have an impact on cost. There's, there's still quite a few questions to be asked, I think. Um, but. One of the ones that, 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 that is going to come is if we do want to participate and. The county says, no, there are no additional dollars, you know, for this, then. Is this a priority versus one of the other roads or ba- basically a road project that is in our asset management plan?
Dan?
We've been having these meetings with the county for a couple of years now. We've been having these meetings with the county for a couple of years now. I was still the superintendent when we were just, I don't, I don't ever remember any discussion about us.
When, 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 when they came to us and said, you know, do you want to participate in this to upgrade your signals? The, the dollar figure associated with that for the ci- city was zero.
Zero, right, okay, when did the rule change, you know that, Justin?
I, I don't believe the, the law has been adopted yet, they expect that it will be before the project gets bid.
Zach?
Out of curiosity, most of the lights down towards Bush's area, those are second generation, those aren't the original install from when it was developed, right?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so I ask because I've, I've always been told the typical control structure is fifteen to twenty-year life span. Which means we've still got ten to fifteen years from those things working. So it's not, they're not at the end of life. I would also caution the C M A C, I don't think there's gonna be any extra wiggle room on there because it's obligated, and they get a certain pot of money, and they do roundabout there, roundabout there, roundabout there, and that's, that's it. So I don't, I don't expect any other money coming from the C M A C pot. I would also throw caution that the purpose of, of getting the life's time is to jam as many cars through a section of road as possible in a limited amount of time. That sounds great, especially if you live in West Ridge, you want to get there as fast as possible. However, it's contrary to a lot of the goals of our master plan to creating a place where people want to walk and spend time downtown. If you have cars going through and you have to wait five minutes to cross the street because it's been prioritized to shoot cars through.
And, and to, to that point, the, when, when, when we were approached, the, the question was, do you want to get onto the, the county system? Not, do you want to have the county manage your timings? So we, my, my, my understanding is that even if we went into the county's system, we would still be responsible for setting our own timings.
For now. Dan?
So if this does happen, would this something the D D A can help with?
Potentially. Yep, I mean, it's right in downtown. But, but, you know, again, I mean, that sentence there, the county has performed a required ADA compliance evaluation and found that some aspects would not meet pending ADA enhancement legislation. That doesn't mean we're out of compliance. I'm just, I'm just pointing, I, all, all, all I was pointing out is that, you know, at, at some point in time, it's likely there will be some upgrades there. Okay, now, what, I, you know, I'd, I'd like to better understand what the number might be instead of, you know, mid-six-figure range and and just assess the benefit of that, you know, the county's been a good partner, there's no ill will here, it's just we have new information now to process and figure out, and whether we decide to do it or not, I think we have to learn and just evaluate as best we can.
Well, what was it, the mid-nineties when they redid all that?
You, you know, the, the, I, I still, I still maintain that a right-hand turn lane up at Jenny's will have the most benefit for already traffic going westbound, regardless of the timing of any light, because one car that doesn't want to go backs the whole thing up in the afternoon.
It's illegal.
Jamie?
Continued on that topic, at least of the Dexter Chelsea roundabout. Obviously, everybody knows how much people are entertained or dismayed by the trucks that get stuck in the bridge there. Is there any part of this project that includes some signage or warning system, or, and can you describe that?
Yeah, so, so the, the county hasn't submitted anything, but they have asked if, if it's possible that we might be able to include some sort of warning signalization prior to the bridge, which would include installing some sort of post on either side of the road, including on eighty-one forty. And so that, from my understanding, there's, there's, you know, a post on either side with a beam, and then if a truck passes through and triggers the beam, then there's a light that flashes that says, hey, you're, you're too tall.
And so, given the location of this project, that would only be on the, the near side of the bridge. It wouldn't be one proposed for the other side, that would have to be part of some other.
Correct.
Did you say on our side of the bridge?
The near side, yeah, yeah. Okay, and then, Marie, thanks, related to your M M L training update, is this intended to address the general question of what is the need for continued future development as pertains to like additional residential and
Correct.
Do you have any other update on that as to the timing or what that would look like?
I, I, I reached out to them and they, they said that they were reaching out to people that they thought might be qualified or able to provide that training, I haven't gotten any additional details from them yet.
Okay, thank you.
But, sorry, there, there, if, if the M M L is able to provide that, there, there will likely be a cost associated with that.
And did you, between you and Marie, did you guys decide that whatever Marie had put together the last time was no longer helpful or relevant, or?
I, I have not followed up with Marie, she, she, she was, I think she was out at the end, end of last week, and she's at, at training all this week.
Any other questions for Justin? Okay, thank you, Justin, appreciate your work. I submitted a short report for the packet. I'm working on the state of the city message and plan to have that ready for the fall edition of the city newsletter. I don't have any other updates, I heard the festival this weekend went really well. Summerfest as it is, a lot of people are happy with the return of the half gallon jugs for beer as opposed to the cans. Topic I received the most comments on, most pictures of. Does anybody have any questions for me? Are there any council member, oh?
Just gonna say, is D D A planning of purchasing anywhere property?
Not that I'm aware of, but I, but watch for helpful hints in my memo, okay, so I'll let you know, I didn't put the address in there, but I put the people. Are there any council member reports? Under, under J seven, okay, then we're down to consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda, would someone like to make the motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll move the consent agenda, motion by Joe.
My second.
Second, thank you. Justin, please call the vote to approve the consent agenda.
Griffin?
No.
Michelle's?
No.
Alday?
Yes.
Semifaro?
Yes.
Schlaugh?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, we have no unfinished business, so we're down to our one new business item, M one. Consideration of the Cunningham Limb G M P, guaranteed maximum price contract change order number two for public safety facilities in amount not to exceed two million eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand seventy-two dollars. Is there someone that would like to make a motion? To start the discussions, Joe?
I'll move that city council approves the Cunningham Limb G M T contract change order number two for public safety facility for amount not to exceed two million eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand seventy-two dollars.
Okay, motion by Semifaro?
I'll second.
Second by Schlaugh, thank you, Dan. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to you, who made?
Yeah, yep, so.
I'll, I'll put some others.
Yeah, so we've continued working through the process for eighty-one forty, and we've we put out the request for bids for the items that are listed on page sixty-nine of your memo, including asbestos statement, demolition, aggregate peers, grading, and construction of building pad, retaining walls and the passive vapor mitigation system. Cunningham Limb has come back with a proposed change order for the G M P for a contract amendment amount of two million eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand and seventy-two dollars. I see Lyndon with Cunningham Limb is in the audience, and I invite him up to help answer any questions that you might have. And.
Welcome.
David, councilman. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Thank you.
Very good, thanks, Justin, for the introduction, Lyndon Ivesai with Cunningham Limb, C O O, I'm joined tonight with Scott Wheeler, who's our investigator. And Kevin Metroski, which I was P I A, as the architect. So I'm here to answer these questions, we're here to answer any questions committed on the change order amendment. Overall, in addition to, we've also included a copy of the updated budget summary for the D B set of drawings released. So hopefully that would help council take a look at the whole picture. We are within the previous budget range for the schematic drawing set. And I want to note that we also included a couple of items that were not in the original schematic design set, which included blockers at seventy thousand dollars of valuation, as well as an additional fifty-five foot of routing in the mill race, which was not known at the time, which is about roughly fifty thousand dollars. All that is included in this updated budget summary, and we're still within the budget range presented by us in July, in the next design set.
So what is that number, what is that range?
So the range right now is that's, so I'm giving you a read of information.
It should be page eighty-six of eighty-eight of the packet.
Is it, is it between nine and nine and a half million, is that the number? Okay.
That is the updated one.
Okay. On change order one, which we approved back on June tenth?
Yes.
How are we doing on, relative to that approved G M P? How are we doing, I know there's been a lot of work behind us here.
There has been a lot of work, there was a slight delay because of permitting with the county, so there was an extension of, I believe, a little less than two weeks for the schedule, however, we're, we're still moving very well as far as the makeup on that goes. We did take the initial two weeks, but it, the project itself's looking very.
Is it on, is that portion of the project on budget?
Yes.
Within budget?
Well, yes, it's, it's low guaranteed maximum price as of right now, no additional change orders within budget.
Okay. Thank you. Questions on, Jamie?
Yeah, on page seventy-five in our packet, it's just under general exclusions.
Yep.
Where am I here? Environmental studies, testing removal or handling of hazardous materials, toxic soils, asbestos, or other such items not applicable. Can you just remind me where we're at with any study of the soils and at this stage, like potential PFOS contamination and things like that, that's already been tested, and we know we don't have to worry about that, or we might come across some things?
That's a great question, I'll, I'll kick that over to Scott Wheeler, our team, he has all the details, he's more knowledgeable on that.
Yeah, this is Scott Wheeler, is everyone able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. A S T I has been doing testing. The limits of contamination thus far that have been found and identified per their reports is roughly two foot below grade at the back of the present station in the lower parking lot area. It is our intention to maintain and try to reuse all soils that are cut to keep them on site to the greatest extent possible. And reuse them so as to limit any need for haul off. The budget does, however, include, and perhaps it's poorly worded where I have, I state it's an exclusion, there is an allowance within our G M P of, let me read it, so I'm, don't misspeak myself. Fifty thousand dollars for site remediation and landfill fees, and then would speak to that should we need to do any haul off. Obviously, the job is largely import because we are building an embankment for the new station. The limits of our excavation down in that lower lot area would be that for the new and revised stormwater work we're doing there. And then potentially the rain garden, which although technically it sets on the park property, not the fire station property, there will be some excavation there. And much of that is outward, norther- north of the existing building line where they have found the contamination.
Okay, thank you, and just, I guess a follow-up, you mentioned the, it's primarily, I don't know if you said infill project or haul-in, however you phrase that. All that additional dirt, soil, et cetera, is that all captured in this change order? Or are there additional dollars coming in the future? And I guess either way altogether, do we have an estimate as to how much we're paying for that?
I do not have a breakout solely for the import, but the cost of all mass grading, as noted on the drawings to date and all that I would ever expect to be noted, is accounted for within the numbers that we got bid on today, or to date.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, it's, it's part of that package C, earthwork?
Yes.
So it's a, it's a portion of the one point two million?
Correct. It is enlarged, I, I can, I can state.
Where it is, Jamie, it's, it's in, it's in there, I believe.
It's bid pack C, it appears on your page seventy-nine of eighty-eight as a, a schedule of values. It's about the eighth line item down.
Got it, thanks.
Olivia, any questions? Does anybody else have any questions? Zach?
Just want to clarify on page eighty-five of eighty-eight, it states that Alpine Street modifications are with line items above. Does this planning range, the nine to nine and a half million, does that include all of Alpine Street improvements?
It includes the food alternate from the last budget summary, Scott, I'll let you elaborate on exactly how much of that includes any.
Yes, I cannot state for an exact amount, I haven't got it because I'm still trying to narrow it down to the low two bidders. But it includes the site demolition and the grading and the base for the pavement. It does not include the curbs, the concrete walks, or the asphalt pavement in Alpine, because those will be part of the next bid pack for the, those trades when they just bid. Right now, we, that, our site work was only really limited to just the mass grading. So it does not include also, it would not include the landscape, any portion of the little bit of landscaping that would fall within those boundaries. It does appear to be fitting within, I would say, the three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars that we had earmarked before, though.
And we'd been told previously that there'd be an attempt to reuse the decorative fencing along the top of the embankment now. That appears to no longer be the case, are the fences no longer usable, or is that, this a worst-case scenario?
I just asked for that quote from the earthwork guys, just to have it in our hip pocket, it wouldn't be my intention to award it that way. It would be our intention to hopefully have a, a fencing contractor on board that could remove those. And then put them in, you know, off to the side as attic stock or someplace salvage them, but I just wanted to have in my hip pocket some sort of idea what it would be if we had to remove them. Not exactly sure what, we'll have to take an inventory of what's there to see how we can integrate it within the new design. There's relatively, to date now, and I have not just received earlier today the next bid pack, but what I'd seen to date, there wasn't a tremendous amount of new ornamental fence going in down on the site. Just that portion that's necessary maybe to replace back up at the top of the hill, back towards the ramp of the new fire station entrance off Alpine. I would not think they'd be usable as the railing portion of the ramp, though. That would probably need to be more substantial and a more traditional miscellaneous iron there. That would probably need to be more substantial and a more traditional miscellaneous iron there.
Any further questions? Okay, Justin, please call the uh vote to approve the guaranteed maximum price change order number two.
Schloss?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes, no answer.
Why are you not voting?
Uh, because I don't believe it's it's in agreement with our rules. Our our rules say how to record if someone doesn't offer a vote, by the way.
Yeah. Just interesting to, that you started doing that.
Is it?
Alday?
Yes.
Semifaro?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate your attendance. Scott, thank you. Kevin, thank you. Doug Ed, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're down to non arranged participation. Is there anyone that would like to speak and, or is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak again? Anyone online want to speak on or non arranged? Please use the raise hand feature if you do. Council comments. Olivia, I'll start with you. Okay. Zach?
Uh, reason I voted against consent agenda is I've always been taught that if if the zoning amendment fails to make it all the way to the end. You have to restart the process and that's why I asked that question. Always interesting to be interesting, so thank you for that. That's it.
You're welcome. Jamie?
Nothing, thank you.
Senon?
Just looking forward to paint Dexter Festival.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Um, so on the topic of voting, um council rules, rule five says. All council members shall vote on all matters before the council unless there's a conflict. And the city charter in section six point oh five says, voting except on procedural motions. Shall be by roll call and the As and As shall be recorded in journal. So as such, I think any votes that are not affirmative should be recorded as no and reflective of such amendments.
Yep.
Would you agree, Zach?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Well, we all learned something new today. Um, does anybody have any proposed agenda items for future meetings? Zach?
It's, we can probably remove uh recognition of Paul Cousins. Unless there's something else we have planned.
Yep, agreed. Okay, I'll see the motion for adjournment. So moved by Alday. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by the end. All in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye. Aye.
Have a great, have a great week, everybody.
Hope you don't. It's because Lab of those only got twelve summers, right, which is way too few summers for that. Yep, um. We take them there at the end of the day, there are less people there. When we get them there to make them sit the beach, we hook them up with a little fancy swimming floaty rope and the retractable things. And release them and they go running out and walk. This time we got there off to the side by the shrubs, there was some pile of things that looked like. To me, it looked like there was ash from someone did a grill and dumped it there. So we went a little bit to the side, leased him, he started running towards that interesting thing. I'm holding on to the rope. And. Yes, it was. So whatever temperature it got in those three seconds, it was enough to melt my skin.